All right, it's five thirty. If you'd like to follow me over, I'll go off for attending our special meeting.
Jim Dunn? James Shiloh? Christian Koppel? Mike Vito?
Here.
Beth Marie Evans?
Here.
Alex Graves?
Here.
Eric Jones? Present? We got everybody else? Superintendent? We have a forum.
The agenda is in front of you. Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to approve the agenda or adopt the agenda as proposed? So.
Second.
You've been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approves. Motion carries. Excited then to be the state of the district.
So just want to welcome everybody. Had the opportunity to do some town hall meetings in previous positions, and this is the first time that we're doing a town hall meeting in my time here in Sycamore. Typically, what I've done in the past is present just a little bit of brief information to kick it off. Tonight, I'm going to do a brief presentation on the state of the district. It's really kind of modified presentation from the presentation that we've done in the past at a state of the district event that SEF has sponsored in the past. So I'm going to do that just to kick things off. It's pretty high level, general information. But in the event that anything comes up tonight that maybe relates to information I present, we've got a little bit of context to do that. So I'll do this. It'll take just a couple of minutes, and then we can open up the town hall portion of the meeting. I'm going to stand up just because it's a little easier for me to do this. Again, this is kind of a modified presentation that I've done for SEF State of the District before. Some of the information has been updated yet because I pull up from the state or the school report card, which has not been updated quite yet. This, however, is current. At the first meeting, a regular meeting of the board in September, we shared six day enrollment. Why six day enrollment? Because for many years, the school districts across Illinois were required to provide enrollment on the sixth day to the State Board of Education. We're no longer required to do that, but we have this data point that we've had for many years. So we've stuck with that. Sometimes a good question is, are schools growing? Is our school shrinking? Actually, the dip there in 2021 is due to COVID. And after that year, we slowly and steadily creeped back up almost to where we were pre-pandemic. So a little dip that we're recovering from. But the point I always make to the board is if you look at that trend over the last ten years, our school district enrollment is very stable. We're not really seeing peaks and valleys, other than the COVID year. Really very stable. This is student demographic information. Most of the rest of the data is from the 2022 report card. The 2023 report card just hasn't been finalized yet. Should be coming in later this month. But you can see the light green are our school districts. Percentages, percentage of white students, black students, Hispanic students, so on and so forth. The darker green is the state average. So this graph shows not only our information, but it shows how Sycamore compares to the rest of the state. More information from the 2022 report card. Sixteen percent of our students, not families, but students qualify for free or reduced lunches. State average is forty-seven percent. Fifteen percent of our students qualify for specialization services. State average is seventeen. Three percent of our students qualify for Yale services, fourteen percent across the state. And then last year, last year on this slide, ninety-two percent of our high school students graduated in four years. State average is eighty-seven percent. We have approximately three hundred teachers, approximately six hundred total staff, employees, volunteers. That's everybody that works or volunteers time here in the school district. That's coaches, that's sponsors, that's teachers, that's paraprofessionals, you name it. Their teacher salary in 2122, which is reported on the state report card, is sixty-six thousand, six seventy-six. Or was sixty-six thousand, six seventy-six? Over the last five years, approximately ninety-two percent of our teachers have chosen to stay in Sycamore. So one of the things that the state tracks is teacher retention. How many of your teachers? It doesn't track paraprofessionals or any other groups of staff. But out of your teachers, what percentage of those teachers choose to stay here in Sycamore? And for us, over the last five years, that's ninety-two percent. One of the things that we're very proud of is that in 2223, all seven of our schools were identified as commendable by the state of Illinois. So that's based on data from the 2122 school year. This information was released last fall. A little bit about activities. Coincides with the work that our students do in the classroom, the academic piece. About a third of our students participate in activities each season. Not just athletics, but non-athletic activities as well. Our activity programs go hand in hand with our academic programs. For many students, that's one of the reasons that they stay engaged in school is because they're coming to participate in an activity, whether it's sport or non-athletic activity. Our activity programs have success. A lot of them have success in terms of wins and losses. But in the four years that I've been here and the conversations I've had with our athletic director, Mr. Richard Carrick, as well as coaches and sponsors from around the district, one of the things that they talk even more about is characteristics that students learn when they participate in activities. So the dedication, the commitment, working hard, collaboration, and so on and so forth. Financially speaking, we're committed to living within our means. It's one of the things that I've shared with the board. One of the things I've talked with people stucker about is he's our assistant superintendent for business operations. It's really important to me that we live within our means and not extend the district financially. About seventy to seventy-five percent of our financial resources come from local sources, primarily property taxes. Approximately twenty to twenty-two percent of our financial resources come from the state. The remainder come from federal sources, for example, Title I and Title II. Several years before I arrived here, the district was in a much more difficult position financially. So the district went through a period of time where we had to make some difficult decisions. Some significant cuts were made across the district in order to keep the district financially solvent and maintain financial integrity. Those decisions are paying off now. Just two weeks ago, the board approved a balanced budget for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Not two weeks ago, it was our last meeting last week. One of the things that was happening a couple of years ago was we had to issue tax anticipation warrants for to borrow money at the very end of the fiscal year, just to get through the school year. But because of the decisions that we've made over the last several years, we don't have to do that anymore. So we don't have to issue those tax anticipation warrants. There's also positive signs of economic growth, both locally in Sycamore as well as regionally in the county. A lot of that growth is happening farther towards the interstate, I-88. That's not located in Sycamore School District, but we're seeing some growth and some positive signs in our school district. We've completed some significant facility improvements in all of the schools, but the high school here is in need of some additional work. So that's one of the things that's on our radar here. Talked about that for the last couple of years, and it's going to be a topic of conversation moving forward. That's my last slide. Now, before we open up the town hall, any questions?
So this is something of a new experience for us, something we're trying out. And so we thought it might be a good idea to have some rules of engagement. And we've put those down in writing, so I'd like to read those out for you tonight. Thanks for attending this evening's town hall meeting. While regular meetings of the Board of Education are scheduled for us to conduct business, town hall meetings are intended to give us a chance to engage in dialogue with our community. We welcome your questions, suggestions, and comments, and will respond as we are able. There may be matters that require more information, and in most cases, we will delegate a response to the superintendent. We are committed to conducting ourselves with respect and transparency, and we ask that you do the same. Mr. Wilder will facilitate this portion of the meeting, and it's my pleasure to turn the meeting over to him at this point in time.
So it's still a special meeting of the Board of Education. So, you know, they're obviously still involved in this, but we're glad to start fielding questions and comments. All I do is ask that you raise your hand. I'll do my best to call in everybody. All I'll ask is that, you know, when I call in you, just if you would give us your name. So if there's an issue that needs to be followed up on, I can get in touch with you afterwards. So any, any comments, questions?
I would like to have a few moments to say a few words about the thing.
Sure.
That may be important.
Yeah.
Actually, so I can see everybody. And I can't see everybody because there's a... Okay, there we go. Hello, thank you for coming. My name is Michelle Melnuck. I'm a proud grad of Sycamore High School from nineteen ninety-eight. Probably doesn't sound too far along, but I'm also an Army veteran, and I'm a two thousand and five graduate of NIU School of Nursing. I'm also the mother of two current Sycamore students. I'm an RN with over eighteen years of experience, and I was a substitute nurse last year, and I was at the middle school this year from August fourteenth to September sixth. I'm here to talk about the school nurse crisis and how it's affecting our students locally. How many nurses have been, just if you guys have any idea, at the middle school in the past three years? Anybody have an idea?
More than three.
More than three. Correct. They're now are on their fourth nurse. Prior to that, one nurse was there over twenty years, and she was compensated on the teacher's salary. We talked about salary up there of around sixty-six thousand. I did not make that as a nurse with a bachelor's degree and eighteen years of nursing experience. And all of that is public record, by the way. If you are comfortable, also, do you know if your school, if you're a parent here, does your school, if your child's school have a nurse full-time? So in Sycamore, there are only four nurses that cover five grade schools, one middle school, and a high school. Next door to us is a lot different. So I have a daughter that has allergies, and there are other health conditions out there like asthma, seizures, diabetes. American Association of Pediatrics, the CDC, and the National Association of School Nurses recommends having at least one nurse in each school. As we noted on the presentation, we have three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six students. So that is one RN for every nine hundred and thirty-one students. And four of those nurses are certified, and we have the health assistants. I would like to pause and say, the health staff for Sycamore School District is subpar, like high. They're amazing, okay? I am so blessed to have them as friends and to know them. They are awesome. The American Association of Pediatrics has previously supported ratios of one school nurse to seven hundred and fifty students in the healthy student population. And for, I'm sorry, and then one nurse to two hundred and twenty-five students for populations requiring daily professional nursing services. The use of a ratio for workload determination in school nursing is inadequate to fill the increasingly complex needs of health of the students. The role of a school nurse has expanded and changed since its inception back in the late eighteen hundreds, if you could believe it. It now includes surveillance, chronic disease management, emergency preparedness, behavioral health assessments, ongoing health education, and extensive case management of high-need students, and more. School nurses are the connection between the school community and the greater, and the greater health and medical community. The core focus is keeping students healthy and in school. School attendance is essential for academic success. School nursing is a specialized practice of professional nursing that advances the well-being, academic success, and lifelong achievement and health of students. School nurses are part of the large team of school employees who helps Sycamore School District's mission of empowering all learners to succeed in their work. Forty percent of school-aged kids have a chronic illness, diabetes, asthma, allergies, seizures. One in five young people between the ages of four and seventeen years old experiences symptoms of minor to severe mental behavioral health problems. One in ten children in adolescence has a mental illness severe enough to cause some level of impairment, and only about twelve percent of those children that are in need of mental health services actually receive them. This statistic was very shocking. Sixty to seventy percent of school health office visits, and I experienced this myself, have a root cause in mental health that present with accompanying physical symptoms. So full-time, having a full-time nurse in every school can actually result in cost savings for our society. For each dollar spent on a school nurse, two dollars and twenty cents was saved in the parent loss of work time and procedures performed in school rather than a more costly healthcare setting. I do want to note that next door to us, DeKalb, they have six hundred, as this is as of twenty twenty-two, where some of your statistics were taken, six hundred and sixty students with eight elementary schools, two middle schools, a really big high school, and a preschool. They have quad, over quadrupled the nurses that we have. Nineteen total, eight certified nurses and eleven nurse, regular, you know, procedural nurses, and eight health assistants. DeKalb is also now the employer of several former Sycamore health staff, three certified nurses and one RN, myself, all within the past fourteen months. School nurses can improve attendances by reducing illnesses, illness rates through education about preventive healthcare, early recognition of disease processes, improving chronic illness, chronic disease management, and increasing return to class rates. Of the students usually seen by the school nurse for illness, ninety-five percent return to class. That's seen the actual school nurse. Direct health services provided by a school nurse are linked to positive academic achievement. With a full-time nurse in the school and other staff, including teachers, they can divert less time from their job to deal with health issues. Good health and strong education cannot be separated. And I implore everyone, spread the word. We need more nurses in Sycamore School District, and we need to retain the nurses that we do have. I just experienced this, and I wanted just to share this with the town hall and let everybody know what has been going on. And I have articles and everything that you would need if you want to know where I got all my information. So yeah, any questions for me? Thank you for letting me talk. Thank you.
Michelle, I'd love to have any of that information you can share with me.
Sure. I'll forward you all the articles, absolutely.
Is there anyone else?
Yes, my name is Roddy Cowan. I'm a nineteen ninety-one graduate of Sycamore High School.
I'm not going to tell you what year I earned here.
My question is regards to the routine because I seem to remember when my sons were in elementary school, there was a full-time nurse at every building at that point. What changed? Why did we get rid of these nurses? I understand that there was, when you said that there was a time where there was a budget issue, but now you've gone back to saying, oh, we've been able to balance the budget. I definitely agree with everything she says, having worked in a health office covering for the nurse if she could go to lunch like that in a, in a different district. And so if you're talking about balancing the budget, if you're talking about what's in the best interest of the students, then I think this is definitely a priority. Because I, having seen myself in this other district that I work in, the necessity of what these, these nurses do and how they truly do help each student from the back. And not only the students, but also the teachers as well.
Yeah, so I can't, I can't respond to what changed prior to my arrival, but, but I'd like to follow up, you know, a little bit of information, share that with you. I think it's a good question. I can speak to what happened here. I can speak to what happened in other districts across the state. At about the same time, some, some of the requirements issued by the State Board of Education changed. And at the same time, in my experience as a superintendent of a previous district, it became really difficult to find certified school nurses, certified school nurses, RNs, health assistants, health aides. And each district does it a little bit different. I was in a smaller district, and we just had trouble finding. I know staff that met the qualifications, they should basically, but I don't know exactly what happened here. I'd be glad to look into that and respond to it, for sure.
What about certified school nurses in Sycamore School District?
What, what happened with?
What's happened to certified?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that question. I don't know in terms of what happened years ago.
But in the last few years, what has happened with that?
In the last four years, we've added two.
We only have two.
You only have two. And you said you didn't know where they...
When I started four years ago, we didn't have any nurses employed as certified school nurses.
Patrice Broch was a certified school nurse.
I take it back here, right? So we had one, she retired that year, and we brought on.
And she was also.
And if I remember correctly, we might have had her retire that year. I'd have to go back and double check that.
So I replaced Kristen as a certified school nurse. She had left before, but then Cory took that position. And then Patrice was still working here because we started at the same time. And then Patrice retired, and it took one year to fulfill her role. And three people interviewed for that one position. So I don't think there's a shortage of school nurses, certified school nurses here in this area.
Yeah, like I said, I, I can't speak to what happened previous to me arriving here. I was explaining what happened in previous, my previous position. You're right, we had one. There was a change in staffing. Now we're, we've got two that cover the entire district. One covers elementary, K, no, one covers elementary, one covers secondary. So, so, and that's part of what the state changed in terms of their requirements, primarily for students with IUPs involving nurses in that process differently than they'd been before. So that was a little bit of a challenge for school districts and our previous districts. Can't speak to what happened here. I don't, I don't know that off the top of my head, but I'd be glad to look into it and get back to you.
Have you gotten more insight about what's happening now as a Sycamore resident, a former Sycamore employee, and with two students in two different schools in the district?
So we still have the two. We've had a request for more. We haven't, I haven't approved that yet. We've asked for some more information. And we have a new director of student services who's working with our, our head nurse to look at maybe how we can restructure some of the positions to continue to live within our financial means. We do our best to meet the needs of our students. As you guys know, nurses don't just serve students, they support staff as well. So it's one of the things that we're still having ongoing conversations about, but no changes in the decision quite yet.
And it's my frustration at seeing the numbers that you're presenting to this entire group of the amount of employees you have, the number of students you have, and the number of nurses you have doesn't quite make sense of what you're asking nurses to do. As far as, what was it, seven hundred and fifty per one? That doesn't add up. So four school nurses or procedural nurses, whatever you want to call them, to thirty-seven hundred, twenty-six students. If you divide that by four, that's nine hundred and thirty-one. So that's much more than the minimum suggested wants us to do.
I mean, you can be accurate, so it's a one nurse, a minimum one nurse per school. And I was actually very happy to hear this because I grew up with lots of awesome teachers that stayed and are retired or passed away. But ninety-two percent of the soldiers in Sycamore, while that's not the same with the school nurses, there is no retention with the school nurses. I have seen in the past three nurses at the middle school have come gone.
Out of curiosity, do you know if that data is registered nurses or just some who's serving in a nursing capacity?
No, this is actual registered nurses.
That, that one to seven fifty ratio? Just because I found that data, I was trying to dig it up.
Oh, yeah, that actually is an article, again, it's from the American Academy of Pediatrics, and their studies and everything, and we know that too. You cannot be a RN without a certification. So in order to be a nurse that awful, you have to have a legal association with doctors. But it's all the same. You're an RN, you're a registered nurse with a license. If you're at a nursing home, you could have a, like, a licensed practical nurse that's not a bachelor's degree or a physician. But all nurses, correct me if I'm wrong, in schools are RNs.
If you are acting as a nurse doing that scope of practice, you need to have education and experience behind it. So no one should be performing nursing scope activities or jobs or tasks without having that license.
That's, that's helpful. I was, I was thinking through the data as you were talking, it's been on my mind. And, you know, looking back, the Department of Health and Human Services was what was the survey done in like fifteen, sixteen, that showed only about fifty-two percent of public schools had a full-time nurse. So I'm just trying to understand, not just how it affects Sycamore, what does this look like at a global scale? You kind of talked about looking at our neighbors, and I just want to kind of reiterate that a lot of the difficulties that we faced in the last several years are financial in nature. And it's great, and I completely agree with you that if we could add a dozen nurses and other positions, everybody is asking for help. And I think the teachers would give you the same or give a similar talk to what you did about how their role has expanded over the last couple of decades. And we did requests for adding personnel there. We've had a huge focus on social emotional learning, and then we're psychologists, counselors that we need. So I, I will tell you that each year, we go through a request to add, what was, what was the request this last year? I would say thirty, forty personnel is what's getting asked of us from different departments. And nursing makes up one of those, and so it becomes the difficult position that we're in to try and prioritize which one of those is, is the most important.
Would you agree that the health of students in order to learn their health is a priority? Like, if you're not healthy mentally, physically, emotionally, psychologically, you cannot learn.
I would agree.
Yeah. And it is, it is a national crisis.
But if my budget is this big, is that we're taking away a second grade teacher to fund that position? Is that the bigger priority in leading to a better outcome? I don't, and I don't know that I have the answer to that. I'm just saying that's the difficult decision that, that we're faced with. And unfortunately, our partners to the south, as you mentioned, their funding from the state is significantly different than ours. Okay? This, this most recent year, and I'm going to probably butcher these numbers, but they're approximate. Their state funding from, from the state of Illinois went from forty-four million to about fifty-one million and change. That's just from the state of Illinois. Ours went from, I think, twelve point six to thirteen point two. So we got like a six hundred thousand dollar raise from the state of Illinois. They got an almost seven million dollar raise. So you can understand that they've got a lot more dollars to be able to throw at those resources than what our district can without going to the taxpayers. And even there, we're asking for the biggest raise from the taxpayers that we can this year, and that's still barely going to meet the needs that we have from a building repair standpoint, the contracts that we have in place with personnel. So I, I completely appreciate it, and I agree that it's something we need to continue to look at. I just want you to understand that that is a piece of the much bigger request that we are getting from every department, and everyone, I think, would say that they're justified in saying that their need is just as impactful on, on students as, as you said, as student health is.
Why is there a big range of money here, not money here?
Between us and DeKalb?
Yeah, I...
That is a fantastic question.
I figured that out too.
I, I am asking the same rep that same question.
So having worked in both districts, as a nurse myself, doing the job here versus what I am able to do in DeKalb as a certified school nurse, so honoring my education, being paid on that pay scale, and the job expectations are very different between the two districts, which doesn't quite make sense to me, but things are structured very differently. I would encourage you to look into Medicare funding and what nurses are able to do and how schools can receive funds from them. Because nurses can help make you money, if that's your thing, sir. But you have to bring them in and pay them.
I don't make any money. But I, I, point is, thank you.
I appreciate the, you're, you're very admirable in having this conversation. Actually, you know, you all received my letter back in August twenty-first, and I did ask for a person to present to me, and that never happened, for my own. So I do appreciate you having this back and forth. Thank you very much. And explaining that about the difference of financials. I, you know, I can't build a house, but I can take care of patients. I, I just, it's great to me, you know? I understand money, yes, but...
Yeah, my, my neighbor's also a nurse in DeKalb, so I'm having some more conversations with her as well to understand, so. But I appreciate her.
You're a home neighbor, I mean, you're a real home neighbor.
Anyone else who would like to address the point?
I'm so sorry. Yes, my name is Roddy Cowan. I'm a nineteen ninety-four graduate of Sycamore High School. I went to four different high schools, two countries, and two states. My father... I went to four different high schools, two countries and two states, my father is retired military, so I did my last year here in the middle of nowhere. So, my biggest thing is that when I ask why there's only twenty minutes for library at the elementary school, twenty minutes for library. I can tell you, learning to read is the most important thing, you cannot do computers, you cannot do math, you just gotta be able to do those work problems. Learning to read is a super important thing, and part of it is the library, and giving them twenty minutes is ridiculous, having been a media assistant myself for eight years working libraries, appearing as working libraries, the necessity of being able to look at a book because they wanna read different things. Giving them twenty minutes is ridiculous, I understand the constraints of time and contracts, but the fact that, and I had talked to somebody about this a couple of years ago, they said, oh yeah, we thought about maybe just a drop-in. Drop-in, really? Because of the fact that we have a district librarian. Yeah, right? He could be doing a curriculum, why is he doing a curriculum for the, um, media assistants at the elementary school? It is so important for them to learn about the library, to feel comfortable to be able to find their own books, for the library, the, for the media assistants, to have the time to show them. I have been able to get history, we never measure it. It was huge. But I wouldn't have, I just had twenty minutes. You have to get them at home if they need that time, again, being also a teacher, I do understand contractually where you're at. But there's something that we need to do, because right now I think that's a real slap in the face as far as learning to read, I think it's, makes us look at as additional. Because reading is everything. Is you going to do that?
I think it's a good point, um, and you have the nail on the head there, we've got expanded hours and minutes in the day and trying to fit it all in and the contractual obligations provide, you know, as much as functional um, opportunities as we can, it's a matter of, um, trying to fit that puzzle together. Uh, I'd love to have more time, um, I don't wanna speak for all the principals, but I'm guessing they all, if they have more, more time in the library, but it really does come down to trying to fit that, that big puzzle together, and, um, I'm glad to take that, that question back to principals who work on the master schedules and, you know, follow up with it.
There's kind of a computers, don't they use computers? And Mark, aren't we saying that these kids are on computers so much anyway, do they really need to be on? It isn't like they all know how to turn on the computers anymore, I mean, seriously, I was in therapy one day, I thought they needed starting for a work degree. So, you know, I, that's things to look at, is how we spend our time.
Totally agree, and, and that's an area where, where personally, for over the years, I've, I've struggled because kids use computers every day, they use, they use tablets, they do scrum books. Um, if that's integrated into that curriculum, do we still need that time? But then I go and visit schools, and I see some of the, the, the stuff that they're learning during that time, so I think it still has value. Again, it, 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 it's part of that, that puzzle of fitting the date together, the master schedule, and some of the constraints that we have to live within. Um, but I wouldn't be surprised as the years go on if we look at changing time like that, because kids are doing more and more on technological devices, and they're learning more, um, and integrating that into their classroom and what they're doing, um, you know, with their teachers. So, I think your point is, is well made, um, but as you also said, there's, there's some constraints that have to live with, with the master schedules together.
I'm a little curious, what happens with what, I didn't have a library class in high school, what happens in library?
Do they have access to the library?
We have a library, we didn't have any dedicated time throughout the days.
Oh, well, um, so in elementary school, you know, each year you teach something differently, like you taught them in kindergarten, you talked about how they took care of books. You introduced where they were, how to help find them, and each year you would build on that. And so by fifth grade, like I was having kids put away books, not because I couldn't do it, because in high school they were doing on a makeshift. So that they could figure out where the numbers were, find out where they want to, rather than, and, um, exploring new books. Um, I would read like the first chapter of, uh, a new book. I talked about books, I talked about, um, I used to go to a conference in, uh, Louisville, uh, put through a book company uh, in Naperville, and I would bring all the books back and we would talk about them, we would talk about the authors. And there's a very popular series called Wings of Fire. And I would be able to talk to them about that, if I had twenty minutes.
Sorry, was this at the elementary level?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant the high school.
But middle school, high school is so much different, because really, middle school you have a little bit more freedom, but you still go down. And you still learn about things, you learn about, um, techniques, you also learn about fake news, real news. That's some of one of those things that you'd learn about, also in high school. Because there's so much of that on there on the internet, that the kids are all on that, I feel like. Well, that's confused. So do they, they're, do they really, and you do, do you think there's any studies that show that their attention is? Sure, because of the fact that, they want, they want it all right there.
Could this be getting back to the staff issue again? You know, how many kids are you talking about coming in the library that would need to be supervised? So you'd have to have a teacher to supervise, I totally agree with you.
Oh, no, no, you have, well, no, if you.
I totally agree with you that kids need to read more, they need to be able to read.
But then don't use the, the media assistants as, you know, treat them as media assistants. Honor their, their profession. Honor.
But how many kids are you talking about?
Oh, I know you said that in class.
Do you know how a group of kids will act using the library now, you know what I'm saying?
Oh yeah, no, no, I, I, I have a very good.
Yeah. So, if you have one person, how are they going to?
Why wouldn't it just be one person, five hundred people?
Well, because we were just talking about available monies for staff.
Oh.
That's what I, you, so we're getting back to that again.
Again, and I understand it, but see, I'd rather see that computers, because I feel like they have enough time on those computers where they take them home now all day, and they take home all weekend, and they have all kinds of access to not even um, even on their TVs, I mean, they know how to work these things. We need to, we, they need to learn how to play the game, and the scores they have generally show have come down. Especially with the pre-pandemic, you know, since pre-pandemic, so that's something I think we need to be focused on. And reading is also an enjoyable thing, because they not necessarily don't want to read at their, um, grade level, they want to be more easier, they want to read something that they enjoy. So part of our job is to pull out books that might be interesting. I read this really great book about, uh, fish and under, being under seas, and it was, uh, I don't know, it was a wonderful book, which is, I don't know, and that was really interesting, it was great for them to learn the information.
Right. Well, unfortunately, I agree with you, kids need to read more, and I hope that it's encouraged more at home by the parents as well. Because when I was a kid, I was encouraged to read at home, I did way more reading at home than I ever did at school.
But they don't always have the access to the public library.
We did a, we did a project.
That's actually not true.
Well, no, no, no.
That's actually not true, even kids who are unincorporated have access to the library.
They don't have access as far as if they're, if they're busy, if they're working, not necessarily maybe in the district, again, I know for a different district that don't, doesn't always have the ability to take the choice.
Just speak from experience, like, I know the, um, big thing that one of our nonprofit groups does, and I think we're at the club of Sycamore, they do an adopt a classroom. And we do, uh, books, we give books to students, they get to keep the books, and, um, it's nice, we're adopting like new classrooms this year, and then the kids get to keep the books, even their classroom libraries, which is a nice overlap to what Rotary does with like a Rotary Reader Program. But why I'm mentioning this is, I know, and again, I, I can't speak to the finer points of the number of minutes and instructional time in a day, but I, I would be interested in learning more about how much time is available and how it's allocated, and I think you, you raise a good point. I know that getting in to do the Rotary Reader Program, just to read to those kids for thirty minutes, was like it was, it was really a stretch for, um, uh, for the instructor, and this was a teacher at the time for third grade, I think it was Mrs. Lewis's class. I go in every year, and I know, she's like, Michael, you have ten minutes, you gotta keep it short and sweet, we're like a well-oiled machine, so I definitely think it's something that would need to be really premeditated and, and built into the curriculum, woven in, so.
I just know, like, if, when, if the kids hadn't missed their library time that week, it was just like horrible, they just missed it, they love having that opportunity to really look at different things. And some of the things that they, for, for, I mean, we buy money.
We had a great interaction too, I, and I'm just drawing on this, but I think there's a big piece to citations and learning about citations and from, from library time too, so I think there's a, a treasure trove of opportunity for, you know, helping students get ready for, for post, uh, postgraduate life, and so.
Yeah, so, you know, people, culture, it's a lot, I, which is a lot of cultural.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Um, my name's Emily Pollock, I have, uh, currently fifth grader, and I have a twenty-one-year-old daughter who went to the Sycamore School. Um, clearly there's financial issues, I was wondering if you could share with us what the school is working on, or you know, plans to do to hopefully solve some of these issues, you know, I know, you know, obviously, I've, I've, I've also heard from nurses and that we don't just have nurses, that we have people that are just, you know, able to fill in, you know, not, with, not with any credentials working at schools and um, you know, I've been to a few board meetings and I've heard that you're working to get everyone up to fifteen dollars an hour, which is kind of shocking that you have people working with our students that aren't being well paid, and I understand, you know, but I'm just hoping you could enlighten us a little bit on what are the plans to hopefully, you know, meet some of the demands of our community?
There's a lot there, so I'll, I'll unpack it kind of at a, at a broad level if I can, and Nicole Stuckert, who's our assistant superintendent for business, um, can be here tonight, she's probably a better person to ask that now, because of her role, but because of her standing in the district.
Sure.
Um, so we've got some limits to live within, this is a tax cap district, um, so we can't just for as much as we want, uh, that we would do that, uh, but there's a limit in terms of what the school district can request. Um, we try to balance, um, what that request is with the burden that it puts on taxpayers. Um, one of the, the biggest drivers in, in school districts is when there's growth. So that's one of the things, uh, in addition to the mystery of the state funding formula, um, between the difference between Sycamore and DeKalb. One of the other differences, and I just touched on this briefly earlier, is a lot of the economic growth in the county is happening outside of our school district boundaries. That will certainly be a benefit to some of the other school districts, not only DeKalb, but, um, because that's happening farther down towards the interstate and some of the, the other districts down there, so. Um, so we've got some real limits that we have to work with then, you know, school budget, school district budgets are finite, and, um, and, and the tax cap here in DeKalb County, not just for Sycamore, but for DeKalb County, um, adds a, a little bit different layer, so it truly is a matter of living within your means, you know, monitoring growth, um, communicating with uh, the city, the county, uh, the county development council, just to kind of keep a pulse on what is happening. Uh, and what we can do to draw some of that growth to Sycamore, to broaden the tax base a little bit, not only to grow revenue a little bit, but, um, but also to impact, uh, the community in a positive way. At the same time, um, whenever I've, I've been involved, involved in the budget in my previous district, I did that, did the budget levy, and you can't just look at raising revenue, um, or just cutting, you know, generally there has to be some sort of balance, a, a little bit of bolt in order to, to continue to make that budget. Um, and through a lot of hard work here, we went from cuts to having to borrow money at the end of the fiscal year, to, just to get through the year and then pay it back at the beginning of the next fiscal year. Finally, to a point where we don't have to do that anymore, and I think those are signs that we're moving in the right direction. Um, but there are gonna be limits on that, um, because of the limits that we have to live within, and those aren't mysteries or surprises, we know that, so that's something that we can plan for, for moving forward, so. I think the biggest, one of the biggest ways to, to impact the budget positively would be attracting growth to our community. Um, because we're limited in some other ways, but we're not as opposed to Interstate eighty-eight and some of that, that growth that, that might help us. Um, but one of the great things about this community is, it's a great community, people want to come here, so um, there are a lot of reasons for people to, to move here and, and to live here. Um, maybe that flat enrollment line that I talked about earlier, maybe we can get that to go up just a, a little bit. Um, there's a, several different things that we have to live within, and it truly is a matter of, of making, you know, making the budget work. Um, those are high, that's a high local answer, um, to that question, and I, I apologize, I didn't, I didn't get into a ton of detail, but I hope that helps you understand just some of the challenges that, that we have.
No, I, I know, I appreciate, and I do understand the challenges, I mean, you know, talking about growth and whatnot seems like a double-edged sword, if we have growth, how do we accommodate that when the funds aren't there? But again, everything that's growing and the fact that we have, you know, can't retain nurses and, you know, uh, needs that the community are growing, you know, to be paying staff that's, you know, low grades, and they're going to other districts that can afford to pay more. But there's nothing that we can do other than hope, you know, hope. Uh, you know, it's, it's hard to appreciate that.
There, there's a little bit of hope, but there's a little bit of work, uh, you know, also in terms of, of trying to grow that, and, and one of the, I think the nice things that the city of Sycamore does is really kind of monitor that growth. The bin, or close to communities, where the growth just exploded faster than you could raise revenue to support the programs and, and opportunities, so. I think one of the, the nice things about Sycamore is that that's, um, controlled in a way that makes it easier, not just for the city, but for the public library, the school district, and all the other entities to, to, uh, to listen to that and support it. Somebody else can say, or interrupt?
I, I can add a little bit, uh, I mean, I, I think the thing that's frustrated me the most over the last ten years is just that it seems like, uh, there's not a great understanding of how the budgets for the school districts work. Um, and, and as Steve alluded to it, as we discussed earlier, we really have almost zero control over how much money comes in to the district. Because we're tax capped, because our sources are federal, state, real estate dollars, there's not no wheels that we can, no levers we can pull to change that number. And so when you start with a balanced budget, any person, object, thing, whatever, that needs an additional dollar, that dollar has to come from somewhere else. So if we talk about taking a population of faculty and saying, okay, well, we wanna get them, and, and I enjoyed the board ten years ago, and what was the minimum wage, seven? Seven dollars, eight dollars, so I mean, we had, that, that was a substantial change when that fifteen dollars hit, that obviously impacted a lot, and certainly it made our teachers making, our, our paraprofessionals and custodians and whatnot, making twelve dollars an hour suddenly looked very poor in comparison to, to the other minimum wage jobs that were out there. But at the same time, for us to go from twelve to fifteen dollars, okay, well, that's three dollars an hour per person.
Oh, no, I, yeah, no, I appreciate, that's why.
Nobody in the district, and, and I'm including all other, you know, employee groups here, nobody's gonna step forward and say, well, take the three dollars from me.
Right.
So it takes time for us to deprive other areas, non-personnel areas of that growth, and I think that's what we're seeing, if you've been to any of the meetings in the last year, you'll know that this building that we're in right now needs about seventy million dollars of worth of work.
Yeah.
And I have no idea, but we have no idea where that money is gonna come from at this point. So we can take every incremental dollar that we are able to get through the little cost of living adjustments that, that, you know, do come in from, from revenue dollars, and allocate those to pay, which is what's been done for the last several years, but that means we are not building up any sort of pool of, of funds to take care of this building that was built, uh, nineteen fifty, where's Mark? Mark, what year was this building built?
Oh, you're gonna put me on the, sixties, several of them.
It was fifty-seven or something like that.
Fifty-seven, eighty-nine, ninety-nine.
Finished in sixty, so, you know, we're in a, a sixty-year-old building that needs a lot of work, and unfortunate, fortunately for our staff, even though the, as you pointed out, some may not feel like it's, it's helped. We've been allocating almost all of our additional revenue to, to pay and benefits, and that's, that's left buildings like this in the state is repaired, so just as we go forward, that's gonna be a, a difficult balancing act, you're right, there are, there are certainly people that are going to struggle living in this community on the pay that we're able to provide and some of those jobs, and it's kinda, as I mentioned earlier, gonna continue to get more and more difficult as the state redirects, or at least allocates a lot more of their resources to districts like DeKalb, which we can get, have zero.
And the sand continues to shift, you know, last year, the, the minimum wage was raised to fifteen, last year there was legislation proposed, it didn't pass, to raise it to twenty. Um, I have, uh, uh, I'm not saying that people don't deserve twenty dollars now, but the point is, being able to afford that is gonna be the challenge.
Right.
You know, they, they increased that from twelve to fifteen over the course of a couple of years. Um, while it didn't pass last year, I agree with Mr. Dombek, it, it's coming. So those are other things that we have to plan for, um.
Are there programs that you're looking into, like, you know, she talked about Medicare, you know, potential usage of that? Um, I know federal grants can be finite, but, you know. Um, I know federal grants can be finite, but, you know, at least to help tide you over from your ear, are you taking advantage of things like that? You know, being aware of what is available to the community?
I think that's something that we do on a on a regular basis, you know, I I talk with other superintendents in the area and across the state. Um, I know our other administrators do that as well, our directors do that as well, so, you know, every once in a while, you know, you 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 talk to somebody who's doing things a little bit differently, so you can learn. Maybe that's something that we can tap into and sometimes it works and sometimes sometimes it doesn't. Because the criteria, the or the demographics in one school district are different than ours, you know, and a lot of times that's the qualifier. You have to have a certain proportion of students and and our staff or whatever, so. Uh, I think we do a pretty good job. We're not perfect, but I think we do a pretty good job of this networking, seeing how other school districts are doing things like that and trying to live within their means, uh, but also continue. You know, the old adage is you're you're asked to do more with with the same or less and, uh, you know, that's certainly not anything new. We've been doing that for years.
Steve, do you know who, which grant we recently received? I know there was an awarded grant, uh, for one of the schools that was applied for by the admin. I can't remember. I want to say it was the library grant, um, I remember it still together.
It might have been, there's been a couple, um.
Another grant writing is a big piece. A lot of the admin, it's already in their job responsibilities, you know, you're asked to do so much.
Oh, yeah, no, I know. My southeast has has been the winner of a huge tech grant and things like that. I believe George Rose might be the one that's received the library grant.
Yeah, I do, we still, which is kind of on point. Yeah, no, I can tell another big thing to SCF, Sycamore Education Foundation, has been just, I mean, I I exploding with growth. And that's another really great opportunity for for revenue, uh, for the district. Buy a brick. I know I'm not buying a brick. I know this building needs more than a few bricks, but but SCF is a great way for that to, uh, also spur growth.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to have a summary of the grant that that takes so many time. I mean, the grants that we receive every year. I know we have had some open discussions about hiring just specifically a grant writer and some some districts do do hire that person as dedicated full-time looking for grants and applying for them and you hope that they can bring in enough grants to definitely cover their salary, but makes makes them headway. And I think we partnered a little bit, maybe at some point with SCF, um, to do, to to help find, help us find some grants in their spare time that we could apply for, but a lot of those are very time consuming and resource intensive just to just even get your foot in the door and see if you.
Well, I know, I said with the director of the SCF briefly and she was talking about how she a lot, I mean, agreed on the time Michelle Barra, she spends a sizable amount of time looking for grant opportunities as as volunteer time really to help out the admin and and to help, uh, you know, a lot of these things are on, if you're a professional in the field, they're on your radar already. But, um, but grants are a great, you were talking about, opportunity for revenue with really just a matter of asking, you know, asking and showing.
The the our, um, Warren Underwood does have a email for grants, um, so you could access them and and have it on your radar to send to you. So there is that, you know, as well. I know there's some federal grants that are available to them.
Did apply for a, um, a early education grant. I know that went, a lot of time went into that, um, it didn't count out, but that's the that's the hard part, right?
Right.
You always get them, but definitely worthwhile.
So they scratched the surface of answering your question?
A little bit. I mean, because, you know, uh, I was kind of looking poorly, you know, is there actually potential for, you know, uh, because with whatever, you know, uh, you know, as discussed, that it's just going to keep increasing and if you've got your budget managed, that's great. But if things aren't improving every year, you know.
I think zoning is a big piece too with a lot of the big growth in Sycamore. If you can, and I think we have a really good zone, Eric serves on the zone, but I know a lot of the developments, like Brian Brainerd's working on the fifty-five block community that's that's spurning up. And if you think about what kind of strain on resources that kind of development has, very little. Those those communities are amazing and so supporting that, like Sycamore is championing, championing that, Ranger Development, I know there's another one, um, that's being looked at, that's really big. Um, industry-wise, we're we're limited. I know in terms of of what industrial part space there is, but there is some big growth happening right now that the, I know the city is excited about. It's still very prospective, but that could be an opportunity. Um, but, but yeah, there there is, the horizon is filled with potential prospects if the right development happens that isn't a strain on on resources, so. So I don't, I feel like it it shouldn't be all due to the.
There's there's two sides to a fifty-five and over community. Number one is it's good because the people that are moving into those new homes aren't going to put that much of demand onto the school system. But they're moving out of homes and and younger families are moving into those homes. And so the demand tends to actually increase because of the families that moved into that, those homes. So so that that is problematic for us. The other thing that's problematic for us is no matter how frugal we get, no matter how many cuts we make, every year the state piles on us new mandates. Those mandates are all unfunded. Um, I think, uh, the summary of new laws that we are responsible for this year is forty-some odd pages. And that's just the summary, like a one paragraph summary of each of each statute that that has been passed. Like each piece of legislation that's been passed that we now have to live by and we have to provide. And if we don't, then the state threatens to cut our our funding or or be your pressure. You know, and and the really sad part is if you look at the constitution of the state of Illinois, it says that the state will provide a free education, uh, free public education for for all residents. And, um, the courts have interpreted that to mean, well, they don't have to pay the whole tuition, they're just paying half of the tuition. And, uh, now they don't even do that. I mean, what do we get, twenty-six percent or something like that to of our budget comes from state funding. Um, and, uh, you know, a a tiny slice comes from the feds, I mean, that's what, five percent? Um, so all of the burden is is on us as taxpayers to make up the difference. And, um, the state legislature has has done that, um, I think for all intents and purposes, on on purpose, uh, to shift the burden from the state's general funds to the property taxpayers. Uh, and that's what's happening. And then on top of that, as we talked about, we're we're capped. The most we could ever capture is is five percent growth. And that's only in a year when, um, the cost of living goes up at least five percent or or more. Um, so, uh, we're constantly, constantly, constantly balancing. Uh, and, um, I, you know, we try to do the best job that we possibly can. We want, we want to provide the best possible education we can for our students, uh, with the resources we have. We're trying to be responsible, um, both to the to the students and to the taxpayers. Um, there are plenty of taxpayers who who live in our community who don't have students. They don't really want to pay taxes anymore, but it's just part of the obligation that they have. Um, and, uh, and we do our best to to be wise with that money. And, uh, you can hear in our discussions, um, tonight, I think, the tension that 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 comes from that kind of balance. And, uh, I I just don't think enough people understand, um, school financing. It's it's not the way you would do your budget at home, believe me. It's totally different than anything, um, that that a reasonable person would do, in my opinion. But, uh, nevertheless, that's the system we're given and that's what we have to live with. And we try to do our best. We really, I mean, we really work hard and try to do the best I can. Uh, just to get our our budget into a balanced position, uh, is, uh, is extremely difficult and, uh, you know, we'll continue to try to do our best. We'll we'll continue to try to take all these things under advisement and, um, and and see what we can do, but, um, funding is is so tight for us in our particular district, just given our, uh, demographics, I guess. You know, the state doesn't really tell you, just they're going to give them, but it certainly isn't very much, um, when it's compared to other districts around us, so, um. I I can't cut you off there, but I'm sorry.
I don't want to talk about it. It's not like it's a hopeless situation at all.
No, it's not.
We have a lot of hope here because while we are limited by state, federal, local sources of funding, the traditional way of funding a school district, there are a lot of creative ways that we can implement and explore and the Sycamore community that we have here, I mean, we already had some good ideas pitched. These are things we can explore. These are additional revenue sources that I think we should continue to look into. Um, I think that does provide additional hope for expanding the programs and how we want it to be implemented and potentially pay for themselves. Um, so there's a lot of exciting new ideas that come from 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 this community. I think these open dialogues allow that to be facilitated too.
Oh, yeah, I I agree and and I think we're we're blessed with a lot of support from the community. Uh, certainly, uh, sports boosters, uh, Sycamore Education Foundation, uh, the music boosters. Um, all of those organizations really, um, enhance our our immensely and are to be, um, thanked repeatedly for the efforts that they make to fundraise and to, uh, provide a better educational experience for our students, but, uh.
I definitely agree. I I'm not to cut you off, but I I do, I do want to reinforce what you're saying. I mean, the community organizations do fundraise tremendously for our our students and I am forever grateful. I mean, when Illinois shut down, our music programs didn't have to shut down because of our PCOS. Because of that, you know, our students get to go and see plays and they get to go to Springfield on the luxury buses and all these different things and, you know, the boosters and the music boosters and sports boosters, you know, got some of those teams, you know, coming out of Sycamore High School, the football team's doing so well these last couple of years, you know, tennis is coming up and the music program has been phenomenal, so, and that's all on extra monies, you know, that's raised by parents and people in the in the community. You know, I I do find that to be very grateful and that does, of course, give hope, but I just, I feel for our staff and I of course, the students are impacted by that too and.
So I I agree with you, Chris.
Just to kind of go off, actually, what a lot of us have said tonight and Mr. Roderick brought up is community. We are looking to be surrounded by this. I also graduated from Sycamore ninety-eight, so we're all in the age. But the reality of it is, we do have that. We have the ability. So I guess I would, to be honest with you, when I found out, um, that the majority of the nursing staff is on trade and doesn't have certification, I was shocked. Call it naive, call it what you will. Um, but my kids all go to Sycamore schools and when I get a phone call from the nurse's office and I say, hey, this is, and with the nurse's office, I assume I'm talking to the nurse. I have three daughters, um, none of which have major health problems. But one of which has a health issue that a middle school nurse walked her through baby. Nursing is not just putting a band-aid on or allocating that. They are counselors. They are, um, advocates for the community, the students, the teachers. My point is, is as a community, admittedly naive, I was not aware that it was that bad. So as a parent, as a as a parent that has been involved, that spent more hours cutting box tops and loading up stuff for fun bears, I can tell you my intellect would much more prefer grant writing. So my question for you is, as a community, besides buying a brick, which I more than happily do, if we needed a nurse at the middle school, um, what can we do? I mean, literally, I'm looking around. I see people I graduated with. I see people my kid, that my kids were taught by. I see Mr. Exham in the back that helped me with that fundraiser. This is a community. We're here because we care. They both no longer work for this district and they're here. And they're not mad. They're parents. You're all parents. So as parents, what can we do? And there's a lot that we can't do if we don't know its nature. So I appreciate this. I I really do. I have my oldest already graduated. My last is almost through the middle school. I wish this was more available when they were young. Sycamore has been amazing to my family and amazing to so many families. But we need to embrace that community, be honest with that community and and use it. Use our resources. Have me write you some grants. Like, do you know what I mean? What can we do? Because this is what is getting us through. And we are only what, two percent of the parents, not. And I know what that's like. I know what it's like to be on the school board. I know what it's like to be on the parents' board. The par- participation as well. I know that. But the parents that are here, we care and we want to do something. So give us an assignment. Cool? You can tell I'm not a teacher, I'm a recruiter, everybody.
I have a question. That doesn't have to do with money. Good for you guys. Um, I'm Holly Hasselbring. I graduated nineteen ninety-nine. I know you guys. Um, uh, my question is about the redistricting and how that turned out and are the are the buildings and the classrooms more balanced now and how did that work out with staff first? I know a lot of people moved around, um, morale, that kind of thing. How do you guys see that? Um, kind of panning out now that we're, whatever, my school's been in school for thirty-three days today, so.
This is purely anecdotal.
Mm-hmm.
Me talking, it's not fact, it's not surveys, it's not, um, spring, you know, there there were staff that had, you know, talked about some disappointment. Um, moves were were happening. Um, we handled that, I think, the best that we could. We gave options to move first. So there's always some disappointment there and I think that's totally natural, totally understand. Um, I think the summer helped, you know, we got through some of those moves in in the spring. Did all the work over the summer to accommodate the changes and and, uh, the buildings to accommodate for the the redistricting. Um, staff came back with a great attitude, knowing that there were going to be some some challenges in some schools more than others, right? So a couple of schools stayed pretty much the same. Um, South Curry in specific, I see Mr. Mr. Rocker back there, you know, gained a lot of students. So that added some stress that they didn't have before. They did a great job coming in and and really, I wouldn't say embracing that, but accepting that and and really, I don't know, I think coming together as a staff and their grade levels to to support students and work and support each other, really to work through that too, so. Um, you know, now we're kind of, and I was just having this conversation the other day, you know, we're kind of at that point in the school year, any school year, whether you've redistricted or not, where, you know, the honeymoon of that first week or two is gone. You know, now we're back into the the kind of the group of the school year, so. Um, and yet, you know, I I would say that based on my personal opinion, um, morale was good. I was at West, you know, for a a little bit of time today and teachers and staff, uh, in and out of the office, uh, seemed to be pretty positive, not that they were sitting around with their feet up because they were working on a lot, lot of stuff to do. But, you know, I think the the morale is good and, um, you know, in terms of balancing, I don't have any data to support that, but I know that because of the changes in enrollment across the district, we're more balanced now than we were before. And we'll continue to monitor that. One of the things we talked about, I talked about last year was, um, just having that conversation hour in front of yours. We're not cooling off and waiting, so, you know, we're gonna let the dust settle for a couple of years. We'll continue to monitor it and in four more years, we'll revisit that conversation. Doesn't mean we're going to change anything. We're just going to revisit that, look at the data, how enrollment has shifted within the district and and go from there.
Thank you.
I have a question. Um, Mary Fisher, we have three kids in the district. Um, I'm curious if the movement of teachers last year among schools was a result of the redistricting? Or are we kind of teaming up to do the kind of movement that some other districts around here do? I know a teacher at Cayland who's moved five times in the last six years. You can imagine that's not great for morale. Um, teachers who have been moved, who have always taught kindergarten, who got moved to fifth grade. Not a great idea for kiddos, not a great service. Um, research shows that it takes like three years to become a master in what you're teaching. So if we're moving educators among grades, if they're not asking for that, not only are we kind of not serving them and the kids, um, but we're just, I think, potentially creating a problem. So I know a lot of teachers removed last year and I'm hoping that was just because we drew new lines. So I know a lot of teachers were moved last year, and I'm hoping that was just because we drew new lines. Is this gonna be a new practice, or what's kind of the plan?
So, if you're asking me, are we gonna move X amount of teachers every year, the answer is, I don't know, I mean, that's not our plan. I, I'm not planning to talk with our principals and tell them, hey, you have to move ten or fifteen or twenty or thirty, that's not the plan. Part of it last year was due to redistricting, some of the shifts in enrollment that happened within, uh, the elementary schools. But, um, I think one of the positive things that came out of some of those other changes, um, some of the teachers were reluctant, not very happy about it. Um, some, not all, some of them have expressed, um, just kind of a fresh start, you know? When, when you've done something for a long time, just to change opens your eyes and, and live a different way, so, um, I think overall, we will always continue to look at the staffing, you know, throughout the district, and where our best fits and supports students. So the point you made that I think is really good is that putting a kindergarten teacher, uh, in a fifth grade classroom doesn't always make sense. Sometimes kindergarten classroom teachers express some desire to go to the second grade or third grade, and as long as we can support them through that, you know, we'll, we'll continue to look at that, um, one of the things I think can also be bad is letting everybody stay where they're at for a long period of time, because that can bring complacency, um, and I can be as guilty, uh, that susceptible of that as anybody. So I don't say that just for teachers, it's anybody in our district or any organization, so, um, I think that's something we'll continue to look at every year, but we don't have a goal of moving twenty teachers every year, does that answer your question?
Sort of. I just, I'm just a little, um, you know, the complacency issue, I think there are ways to address complacency without moving teachers out of classrooms. You can, you know, get them into new programs, you can do professional development, I mean, there are wonderful ways. I also wanted to just raise the issue too, that moving educators out of schools where they've kind of been, um, you're disrupting the family that is that school. The first thing my kindergarten nurse said to me when I dropped him off at school this year was that his kindergarten teacher isn't gonna be there this year. So I just, there is, there is something to that, to kids having older siblings, have certain teachers, and to see your teacher from last year in the hallways to make you feel like you're part of that family, so I just wanted to bring that up, so it's out there in the, you know.
I, I think that's a really good point, and, and as decisions were made last year, that was made, they were made over discussions over weeks and months, none of them were snap, quick, able to do this, um, it was, how is this gonna impact, what's the overall impact? Uh, so I, I think the administrative staff did a really good job of weighing all of that as they made those, those final decisions, and, um, that's something that we'll do, you know, just take a look at staffing patterns every year, but I think you've raised a lot of good points, and I would say, most if not all, and were part of conversations last, last spring. Anyone else?
I have another question, a little different, um, topic, the social emotional learning programs, um, I was at the board meeting where those were discussed, and I think it's great that that's, you know, something that's at the high school level for the athletes. Um, my child's in fifth grade at Southeast where they're doing it as well, um, is that being utilized in the middle school as well? So will there be consistency for the students that are being exposed to it currently as they move forward?
Yeah, I, I would say that it won't look exactly the same, just because just the, the levels, the students are developmentally just kind of mature at different rates, and, um, so it's gonna look different, but I think there's been a real push for STL support across the district. And, and at that meeting, um, you know, the questions I was asked, you know, are we requiring everybody to do this?
Right.
I think one of the great things about this work is that a lot of it has happened kind of grassroots, and a desire amongst the staff, the administrative staff, to, to support students. So, it'll look different, but it's, it's happening in, in every building, I would say, in the district.
But that's my concern too, though, is that because it is grassroots and you're, you've got children that probably need that, that are being, what, you know, embraced in that program when they move on to middle school, and that falls away, you know, and that middle school, as I'm sure we all know, is a health scale of its own, to not have that, you know, embrace anymore, you know, that, that's my concern, is, it's just, you know, it's gonna be a very difficult transition to start with this new program, and it's not being, you know, a, a, you know, consistent, you know.
So even though I'm not necessarily requiring everybody to do the same thing, and I'm just gonna use the circles that we talked about, that the staff at Southeast talked about as an example, um, those are the sorts of things that teachers were talking about across schools, um, not just across elementary schools, but across middle school and high school, and, um, you know, I made a point to sit in on some of the circle conversations at different buildings, which included the middle school, and, you know, I think that there is a desire to support students and embrace some of the things that have worked in other schools, but make sure it's tailored to students at, at that level, um, middle school. Any place I taught, there for five years, not here, but in a middle school environment, for five, I was a principal, for a couple of years in middle school. Um, a lot of energy, a lot of challenges, it's a great, great environment, but kids are, you know, as they mature, they become different, so, I think we'll continue to do that, and I think we'll do that across all levels, elementary, middle school, and high school.
Anyone else? Well, thank you for, for attending, thank you for your comments, um, I think they were all valuable, and, uh, it was great to have an opportunity to hear them, and, uh, we trust assured that we will take them under advisement and, um, try to do the best we can, uh, as we do, as we always do, so, um, thank you again for, for attending. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Hallmark paper say aye?
Aye.
Mr. Gary's, we are adjourned.